There is no instance in which those four hospitals within the 30-minute guideline standard have at all said to you, we can't take another PCI, elective PCI patient. In other words, there is access available at those four hospitals for elective PCI patients who presently would need to be transferred in the absence of this application being granted. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. I believe it is.
Okay. Now, one of the reasons you've put forth in your testimony as supportive of keeping patients close to home, you know, closer to the hospital perhaps of their choice, is because of the, without quoting exactly, but some of the difficulties associated with transfer and communication with medical records or transmission of medical records. Is that correct?
Yes.
In the, if we go and bear with me for a minute while I flip through the... Okay, when Attorney Tucci referred to these numbers in the original application in the project description, where he talked about, there were about 155 cardiac transfers from the hospital, in Norwalk Hospital, to other acute institutions for cardiac clinic care. And he did reference 46 to 0.2% being transferred out of 119, 55 being transferred to St. Vincent's, 38 to Danbury, 13 to Bridgeport, and 6 to Stanford, and 5 to Yellman Haven, and even 2 to New York Presbyterian. I've read those numbers, and obviously you have every right to check them, but I represent to you that I've read them from your application. My question about that is, let's take the transfer to Danbury Hospital. Of those 38 transferred, how many of those 38 transferred to Danbury Hospital, of course, without any disclosure of any type of identifiable information, but how many of those transfers resulted in an adverse income, excuse me, adverse outcome, or harm to the patient as a result of Norwalk's inability to communicate in an appropriate manner with Danbury Hospital on medical records?
I do not have the specifics here, so it would be speculative for me to offer a response.
Okay, but do you know of any that happened?
If you want me to guess, tell me. If you want facts, I don't have them.
If you don't have facts, I don't want you to guess. I just didn't know whether you knew it was zero, or you knew it was some amount, you just don't know the amount.
Yeah, as I say, unfortunately, I can't provide you a response because you don't want me to guess, and I don't have the facts.
Okay. Similarly, in the transfer to Danbury Hospital of those 38 patients, how many incidents resulted in adverse outcomes to a patient that would need to be reported to the Department of Public Health because of harm arising from the transfer from Norwalk to Danbury?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mr. Monahan, I'm going to have to provide the same answer. I have not studied the nature of the transfers at an individual patient level, so I really can't provide you with a meaningful response.
Okay. Well, the reason, and I appreciate that, and I certainly wouldn't expect that every detail work its way to your desk. However, given that you have referenced in your testimony the, what you, you know, you call the downside, or what I am saying, describing is the downsides that you describe of transfer and of from one facility to another, even within the 30-minute period, and in the inability to, you know, perhaps ideally coordinate through medical records, it seemed to me, I was just trying to understand whether you think this is a prevalent problem, or whether this is a possibility but hardly ever occurs?
Well, I've been practicing medicine for 35 years, and, you know, I've transferred lots of patients in my life, and stuff happens. And it happens more often in general than it does when you keep the same patient within the same four walls of the hospital. So I think, you know, it's instinctively, I think, sensible to realize that sending somebody out of your institution someplace else invites some degree of risk, but I can't specifically answer the questions that you've posed, unfortunately.
Okay, no problem. So you made it as a general statement as a possibility, but you have no data to back that up, at least as you sit here today?
Other than 35 years of experience.
Now, at some point in time, there was an estimate in the original application made by Norwalk Hospital of projected elective PCIs over a series of projected years that fell well short of the, and I will get to the expert document in a moment, but the 200 facility threshold, that minimum threshold that has been the subject of discussion in this hearing today. You recognize that?
Yes.
And in that original calculation of... Give me one moment, please. In that original calculation, which is in the utilization section on page 36 of 52 of your original application, the Norwalk Hospital projected, based on fiscal years, well, they cited a table, or you cited a table, of fiscal year 2017, 2018, and 2019, and a, perhaps an annualized fiscal year 2020. And for '17, '18, and '19, when one addups at Danbury Hospital, we come up with a total of 73, 71, and 61 in those three successive years of PCIs. Does that make sense to you, or do you want to look at those numbers?
I see the numbers. I'm happy to address a particular question if you have it. If you, you know, want a more educated answer, there are individuals who I suspect you will be calling for cross soon that may be able to offer a greater degree of precision.
I appreciate that, and my questions are not going to sort of get into the sort of nitty-gritty of the calculation. But what I am wondering is, when you see the projected volume in the table below, you see, you know, fewer numbers, or lesser numbers. Do you see that?
I lost you a little bit, Attorney Monahan, in terms of what is falling off?
There's two tables, and OHS is Table 4.
Yep.
And then the projected numbers that, for utilization by service, yes, is for primary elective PCI, if this were granted, would be for fiscal year 20, 21, and 22, a total of 62, 128, and 141. Do you see that?
Yes.
To add the primary elective PCI numbers together.
Yep.
In general, again, knowing you didn't offer every answer to this, but did you know that those were the projections going in? You remember, if you knew?
Well, honestly, I do not know that I looked at or examined with this degree of detail the difference between the actual and the projected, or for that matter, whether Danbury was included in the system numbers or not.
Okay. Let me ask you, were you aware at the time that this application was being filed that the consensus document from the three leading cardiac societies and groups who had reiterated their minimum threshold of 2000, excuse me, in 2014, of 200 minimum procedures or facilities without backup surgery, and that that had not been changed? Did you have any sense that those projections were below that threshold?
I have discussed the numbers with, certainly with Dr. Worschowski at some length, and I'm confident, and we respect the guidelines of 200, confident that we will exceed them. I don't know whether or not, if your question is, well, then why did you submit the application if your number was below 200? I don't know, but you can certainly ask Dr. Worschowski about the differences and whether or not COVID, for instance, is factored in, it's a 20 at all. But I will tell you that our more recent numbers, particularly those from this year, annualized, look at 80 primary PCIs, and if you do the extrapolation, I'm very confident that we will exceed, substantially exceed, the 200 number as a threshold.
All right. When did it come to your attention, in your office, that there was a desire, or need, or request to change that calculation?
No one came to me with an expressed desire to change your calculation.
I'm just going back to what you said, you had conversations with, I believe it was Dr. Worschowski and maybe others, but is there at some point, sometime before you filed your testimony, that someone said to you in words or substance email, "Hey, our projections are below 200, we need to rework them," or words to that effect?
Never.
Okay. So is it the case that from the original filing of those projections below 200 to this very day, you had no knowledge of the modification from below 200 to a projection in excess of 200?
Again, I was not...
I'll object to the form, excuse me, Hearing Officer, I'll object to the form as to modification. That's a mischaracterization of what the witness has testified to. He's testified to a supplementation.
Well, I'll withdraw. Whether we call it a supplementation, a dish, you know, a change, a modification, whatever appropriate word, the numbers changed. What I'm trying to understand is, Dr. Murphy, when did you first become aware that the numbers were being supplemented?
I have to, Hearing Officer Mitchell, I have to renew the objection. There was a premise in the question that quote-unquote, "the numbers changed." That is simply a gross mischaracterization of the evidence. If you are looking at the information that was submitted in Norwalk Hospital's responses to OHS Public Hearing Issues list, it provides updated cardiac cath and PCI case trends through fiscal year 2021 based on FP1-6, meaning the first six months of the year. So those, that's the additional information that was presented. It's not a change.
Well, rather than have, my request is, rather than have Attorney Tucci testify about the change, what I'm asking is whether Dr. Murphy had knowledge that there would be a change, whether it's in the numbers, the calculation, the methodology, but something to get those numbers from below 200 over 200?
I'm going to allow that question.
No. The answer is no.
So when you penned your testimony on August, excuse me, April 15th and submitted it, you did not know that there had been a supplement to those numbers?
Correct.
You've heard a lot of talk about the 2014 consensus document regarding the three organizations that published guidelines, consensus guidelines in 2011, and then in 2014, and remained steadfast at the facility minimum threshold of 200 PCI services as a minimum threshold for elective PCI at a facility without surgical backup, correct?
Yes.
Do you respect that, those three entities as expert entities in the promulgation of guidelines and best practices in connection with cardiac care?
Well, again, I think at the outset, I hope I made it clear, I'm not a cardiologist. I don't pretend to be one, and I have no reason to be suspect of these guidelines or the consensus statements, but I don't know the totality of other guidelines, and I don't want to get, you know, caught in a paragraph or a sentence here about something that may be in the document. But, you know, in general, at least in my field, I read them, and to the extent that they're appropriate, follow them, but I also recognize that in individual patient circumstances, some things aren't followed to the letter.
Who doesn't follow them to the letter?
No, I'm saying if you're applying a guideline, a consensus guideline in the field of neurology to a particular patient, there are times and circumstances where the guidelines are less relevant.
Right. So if, for instance, in these guidelines, and maybe you know enough about what has been said and read, and maybe you've read them yourself, even these consensus guidelines provide an exception to the 200 minimum threshold when a hospital may be in an isolated area, unlike the area you're in, where you have at least four hospitals with full cardiac backup. You understand that there is that exception?
Yes, I do.
And you agree that that exception does not apply to you?
But I just want to be careful that I answer fully here, that I get the sense that the premise of your question is, we're looking for an exception to come in under 200 cases, and that's not, in fact, the circumstance here.
if you didn't know that there was a, and I'm really, really just trying to understand, based on what you said, the chronology here. If you did not understand, as of the time you penned your signature to your testimony on the 15th, that there was not a supplement to the projection, when did you learn that now there was a supplement where we, where Norwalk Hospital was projecting numbers above the 200?
Yeah, Attorney Monahan, you may not fully appreciate the nature of my job. I'm running seven hospitals in 85 communities, and I am not looking at this with a fine-toothed comb to see whether supplemental data has been submitted. I rely on my team. They are enormously talented, filled with integrity, and deeply honest people. So if there's some supposition that somebody's playing a game, it won't fly. I do not recall any specific time where somebody said, "Do you realize that data was submitted?" I've been through CON submissions before, and there are all kinds of answers to questions that are provided on an ongoing basis, and then additional questions appear. So I'm used to this continuum of communication and data exchanges. So there's nothing about this that feels odd to me, nor was anything brought to me as, you know, there's some signal submission here that you need to know about. And I don't have any particular recollection of any particular conversation where someone said, "You need to be aware that supplemental data was provided to the Office of Health Strategy in this particular application."
With that, that was a very specific response. With that, I'm just going to ask Attorney Monahan if you wouldn't mind moving on, because Dr. Murphy has indicated a couple of times that he really, you know, was unaware of the update, you know, in the numbers. Perhaps there may be somebody else that has more knowledge about that on...
I appreciate that. Certainly do that. Thank you, Dr. Murphy, for your patience in that question. Dr. Murphy, am I correct that there is a large cardiology group called Cardiology Associates of Fairfield County in the region that you, that Norwalk Hospital operates in?
Yes.
And isn't it the case that Cardiology Associates of Fairfield County are community physicians who have every right to refer cardiac patients to various hospitals of their choice, correct?
Correct.
So if you were to be granted this application, regardless of the methodology that I will ask another witness about, that gets you theoretically over the 200, you cannot control the referrals of those cardiologists, correct?
That is correct.
So to the extent that your volume depends on complete recapture of all of the transferred elective PCIs out of Norwalk to every other hospital, that is not an assumption that you control. Am I correct?
Again, the nature of the question, a complete recapture, I don't believe that that's built into our numbers, that assumption is built into our numbers.
Okay, so I should ask Dr. Worschowski about that?
I think you can ask Dr. Worschowski or Dr. Lamnitz. I suspect that they would be better informed than I am.
Okay, all right. I just have a few more questions. I believe it's in the testimony of one of the doctors, Dr. Murphy, that there is a new cath lab in progress that you're building, your new Vans, or maybe, is there a new cath lab that NuVance is building?
Yes, sir.
And just, does that cath lab bear in any way with respect to Norwalk Hospital? And approximately when was that construction begun?
I'd be guessing again, it's nearing completion, but I don't know when it actually started.
Dr. Murphy, I really appreciate your time with me and your patience, and I have no other questions.
Attorney Tucci, do you have any follow-up for Dr. Murphy before Attorney Monahan moves on?
Hearing Officer Mitchell, if I could just do some brief redirect with Dr. Murphy, please?
Okay.
Dr. Murphy, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Dr. Murphy, on behalf of Norwalk Hospital as the applicant in this CON proceeding, are you asking the Office of Health Strategy to ignore or change any of its regulations?
No.
You were asked a question about whether you had ever received a call from one of the other friendly competitor health systems in your area, say, for example, from Stanford Hospital, or Bridgeport, or St. Vincent's, saying to you, communicating to your system in effect, "We can't take another PCI patient." And Mr. Monahan asked you if you, what you thought about the concept of there being access to PCI services in the region. Do you understand the difference between capacity and access?
Yes, I do. I thought the question that Attorney Monahan was asking me is, had I ever received a phone call? That was what I was answering.
Right. And the answer is, I take it your experience has been you have not gotten a call from a competitor saying, "Don't send us another patient." So the conclusion to be drawn from that is that your competitors perhaps have capacity to take patients. Does that necessarily equate to whether or not your patients will get quick access to elective PCI care at those institutions?
It does not.
You were asked about questions relating to transfers of Norwalk Hospital-originated patients to Danbury Hospital. Now, Norwalk and Danbury are part of the same integrated network platform of care, correct?
Yes.
And as part of that integrated network of seamless care, do the two institutions share an integrated medical record?
Yeah, so I recognize that there are certainly differences between, at least in my view, in the risks between transferring to a sister institution and a, if you transferring to a sister institution and a, if you will, foreign institution or one that is outside of the network because you don't have access to the same EMR, you don't have access to the same imaging systems, you use a different formulary, you don't have the cell phone number of the interventional cardiologist to whom you can rapidly communicate critical information. You may have a different translation system in place if the patient doesn't speak English. So there are significant advantages to in-network transfers that don't exist when you leave the system. But, so, so, but I didn't know where Mr. Monahan was, was going with his questions and I wasn't sure that was an answer he was looking for. I, I didn't know the facts that he was asking about regarding the specific outcomes of intrasystem patients leaving Norwalk Hospital.
All right, Doctor, one, one more question. I'd like if you'd bear with me, if you could, if you could refer to a couple of pages. The first is page 36 of our, of Norwalk Hospital's CON application, if somebody could provide that to you. And then I'd ask you to look at the Norwalk Hospital responses to OHS Public Hearing Issues List, a document dated April 15, 2021. In particular, they're not marked, but there's a third page that shows at the top a chart entitled Norwalk Hospital Cardiac Cath and PCI Cases Trend Through FY '21.
Yes.
Can you put those two pages side by side?
Okay, yeah.
Focusing first on page 36 of Norwalk Hospital's CON application. Looking at Table 4, under Fiscal Year 2017, it lists the number of primary PCIs actual volume at Norwalk Hospital. What is that number?
20, 2017 was 73, 2018 was 71, 2019 was 61.
All right, now direct your attention, please, to the document that Norwalk Hospital provided to OHS on April 15, 2021. Look at the chart at the top of that page.
Okay.
What, what is the number reported on that chart for fiscal year 17?
73.
The same number as reported in the original application, correct?
That is correct.
What is the number for fiscal year 18?
71.
The same number reported in the original application, correct?
Exactly the same number.
Fiscal year 19, what is the number reported there?
The same as it was, 61.
All right, now let's look at fiscal year 20. What number is reported there?
On the, the second sheet, it's 6-0.
Okay, and then in your, you, you said you've had experience in, in, in being involved in the submission of CLN applications over the course of your many years involved in healthcare, correct?
Yes.
In your experience, is it, is it unusual or not unusual for an applicant to submit updated data to reflect the applicant's most recent experience concerning the particular service issue?
Yes, I, I think it is typical.
The, the column that you see on the third page there reflects the fiscal year 21, actual primary PC numbers of 41, at least through what's, what's characterized as FP1-6, right?
Yes.
In your experience in the, in the, in the world of healthcare, is unusual for hospital systems to look at their actual experience over a part of the year and then project an annual experience based, an annualized experience based on that actual experience?
Objection. I'm gonna, may I object?
On what basis?
I was, after probing this, I was cut off from the questions because Dr. Murphy had indicated that he had no real involvement in this and I should defer my questions to others. And now we're getting into a more detailed discussion of the very tables that I was heading toward that I'm now being, that, that I was told I could not go into. And I don't think it's appropriate. It's going beyond the scope of my direct. I'm cut off by the very objection of Attorney Tucci.
Attorney Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. It's obviously not beyond the scope of the direct. It was, it's precisely in line with the scope of the direct. Nor am I asking the witness to do anything other than testify about his general experience as an experienced Chief Executive Officer of a hospital institution about how hospitals in the normal course of business project lines of business. That's all I asked him.
So I think we are getting a little bit into the details of the numbers. I think that it would probably be more appropriate to have the other witnesses with more, you know, direct knowledge about how those numbers came about respond to those questions.
Thank you very much, Hearing Officer Mitchell. I have no further questions. I'd redirect for Dr. Murphy.
Thank you.
And would you mind if we just took a short break?
Yeah, we're running a little bit long, so we're going to keep it.
Five minutes?
Yeah, let me just ask, is the, there was somebody that was going to be testifying from the legislature. Is that person available?
Not at this time.
No? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that they were not waiting around. Okay, so we'll go back on the record, 3:40, about 3:45, 3:46.
Am I excused?
Yeah, let me just, I don't know that we have any questions from OHS. Let me just ask.
I can wait. No, no, I, I don't want to pressure anybody.
So Dr. Murphy, I'm thinking our questions may need to go to the other witnesses. Let me just confer with Ms. Rival and Mr. Carney. I think our questions go to the other witnesses, correct? That we can let Dr. Murphy go? Justice nodding.
Would that be the same for Ms. Silar?
I think so too. Yeah, I think we're all set with.
Attorney Mitchell, I, I think we have one question for Dr. Murphy that I was aware of.
All right, so why don't we take a five-minute break and then let me ask Attorney Monahan, do you mind if we ask our, our question of Dr. Murphy? I know we're kind of getting into, you know, I don't like to interrupt people while they're doing their cross because you kind of.
No objection. If you need to step out of order, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so we'll come back in five minutes. Then after, after we ask you your question, Dr. Murphy, you can go. And then also, Ms. Silar can also go too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I, let's just come back on the record at 10 of 4. We're going back on the record in about a minute.
Dr. Murphy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Attorney Tucci.
So, Doctor, the Hearing Officer was just asking if you wanted to be excused after, after you were done. And, you know, that's entirely up to you. If you do, they, the OHS staff can ask you whatever question they have for you. But it's up to you. I don't know if you're intending to stay or not.
I don't know how long, I, I have another commitment at 6:30 in, in Danbury that I need to be at. So I just didn't want to get jammed up. So I, I'll work however, whatever suits the, the greatest number of, of individuals here. But if they can ask me a question now and I'll stick around.
That's great. That's fine. Thank you.
All right, we're going to go back on the record. Is everybody ready?
Yes, for the applicants.
Or reporters, ready?
Okay, applicants and interveners, ready also?
Yes.
So, Dr. Murphy, I did confer with my colleagues and we had one question for you based on your prefiled testimony. Going to pull it up. And I'll read it. Says on page 31 of your prefiled testimony, you stated that unnecessary transfers also reduce Norwalk Hospital's ability to coordinate care and manage its cardiovascular patient population. While some patients may be transferred to Danbury Hospital for elective PCI, other patients are sent out of network, sent to out-of-network providers that may not know the patient's histories, et cetera. So I've heard you talk about this in question, in questioning by Attorney Monahan, but we have just a couple more questions for you. And we wanted to know first, and I'll just do them one by one, what are some of the reasons why a patient would be transferred to an out-of-network provider versus maybe Danbury Hospital?
It could be that a relationship that exists, it could be a patient preference, preference of the physician, a preference of the patient, a preference of the family member. There are a number of circumstances that would influence the ultimate destination.
Do you know about what proportion of patients are transferred out of network?
I, I do not know the answer to that question.
And then I think one of the things that we wanted to know is if, if you could help us understand how these out-of-network transfers hinder Norwalk Hospital's ability to participate in alternative payer models.
Sure. As you know, the alternative payment models really are moving away from fee-for-service where the patient shows up and whatever services they receive, they get billed for, to a different model which is fee-for-value where both the, the quality outcome and the cost of that care, the responsibility and the accountability shifts to the provider. And those payment models have been in place and are growing in popularity. And they are believed, certainly the state and federal governments believe that it is through those value-based arrangements that we will ultimately improve quality and reduce the cost of care. So what happens is if you send somebody from Norwalk Hospital for an elective PCI to another facility, it's conceivable that that other facility doesn't participate in that particular insurance plan, let's say. Or while the hospital may, the cardiologist may not, an anesthesiologist may not. They may have a different formulary that doesn't anticipate the particular insurance. Or for that matter, in, in some circumstances, based upon, you know, where the patient goes. If it goes out of state, there can be state plans that become a, a problem. And as I'm sure you're aware, Hearing Officer Mitchell, the, the whole notion of surprise billing, you invite that possibility at times. you invite that possibility at times when somebody shows up to do an emergent procedure. After the procedure is done, you know, these patients don't have the opportunity really to shop for services. They get a big bill, and the patient is exposed to significant out-of-pocket expenses or copays or, you know, major financial exposure because those coordinated efforts do not take place. And, you know, the whole notion of a bundled payment, for instance, is there is an impetus for the institution that has signed up for that bundled payment to say, "We're going to take care of this patient. No matter what it takes, we'll be held accountable for the quality outcomes as well as the cost." So it forces us to be as efficient with the services that we provide as we can be. We lose control over all of those decisions when the patient leaves the network.
Okay. And then is there a way to quantify how these transfers might hinder participation in APMs?
I'm sure there is. I couldn't give it to you, you know, as I sit here with any degree of confidence. But there's no question when, if you look at, we have tens of thousands of patients who were in at-risk models, and we, and the state knows this, has encouraged us to continue to increase our participation in those alternative payment models. When the patients do leave the system, we do find that that is, in fact, where the expenses take off. And that is a significant exposure that is difficult to manage when you're in a bundled payment. We also have challenges sometimes in getting the data back on what the quality outcome was. The different EHR system has different abilities to report back on particular outcomes. So it is, it's cumbersome, it's awkward, it's inconvenient. But I will tell you that it represents potentially a quality concern, but undoubtedly a financial concern.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Murphy, for those responses. Let me just check in with Mr. Carney and Ms. Rival. Any additional questions from us you think that maybe I might have missed?
That was the only one I had.
All right. We're all set? Okay. All right. So that was it from us. I'm just going to follow up again with Attorney Monahan and also Attorney Tucci. Any follow-up for Dr. Murphy? If not, hearing nothing. I think we're all set. Dr. Murphy?
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just have one, I'm sorry, one last question, just on that APM question. How many APMs do you participate in, and how much money is at risk as you just described?
How much money is at risk? We have...
You're on the...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Pardon me. We have about 40,000 patients who are currently under some form of risk arrangement. I don't know the total sum of dollars based on, you know, there are Medicare participants, there are commercial participants, there are even some Medicaid pilots that we're looking at, some national, some state-specific. So it would be hard for me to give you a solid number, Attorney Monahan.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Attorney Tucci, any follow-up?
Oh, thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Murphy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. So I'm going to turn it back over to you, Attorney Monahan.
Before I do that, Hearing Officer Mitchell, are there any group questions for CEO and President, Ms. Alard? Or before, or may she be excused? I mean, from the panel?
Right. So no, we don't have any questions for her.
So just so there's no confusion, she may be excused and...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Afterward, I want to pronounce it correctly. I apologize. Wierchowski. After Wierchowski, I call Dr. Wierchowski for his examination.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, doctor. Really, hopefully, just a few questions. One is, there were a number of questions regarding different medical literature throughout this whole application process. And in connection with that, there were references to 2011 consensus document by the... And I want to get the exact acronyms, the ACH, excuse me, the American Heart Association, the... Give me one moment, please. Just one second. Okay, I apologize. There were several discussions about the literature and guidelines published by the ACCF, AAJ, and the SCAI Census documents in 2011, 2013, and then in 2014. And my question is, do you recognize and see the 2014 best practices or recommendations, I should say, of that consensus group from 2014 as a current state, excuse me, a current guideline that is not superseded, not eradicated, and not abolished?
Yes, I see the 2014 guideline as current, and I would emphasize that it's a guideline, not a policy.
Thank you. Would you, and I believe you may have heard testimony throughout the day on this, in connection with the fact that elective PCIs presently at Norwalk Hospital are transferred, because you can't do them there, are sent to other hospitals for that procedure? Do you, as you sit here, believe that there is sufficient access with those four hospitals to accommodate the transfer of any elective PCI patients that you have encountered to date?
No, I don't believe that.
And what is the basis for your belief that those four hospitals cannot accommodate the elective PCIs, that you would be transferring them to date?
Well, I guess it would depend on how you define sufficient access. But I look at this from the patient's standpoint, and I would be quite upset if our patient or a family member of a patient to be transferred for something that really is not necessary. So although ultimately the patient may receive the, what we're terming an elective PCI, the fact that they had to endure a transfer and that the family may or may not have been able to go visit them at the receiving hospital, for me, is not sufficient access.
Well, I understand. I appreciate your personal opinion. But right now, you understand, under the law, you cannot perform an elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital, correct?
Correct. Under the law, we cannot.
So that if a patient says to you, "Oh, I'm disturbed by this," are you telling me that you are saying, "Well, then you have no access?" Or are you saying they have access, and now here are the places you can go within the 30-mile, 30-minute time period? That's my question. Can they get the procedure done within a timely manner, even though you can't do it?
What I am saying to the patient is, "I am sorry. At this time, we're not able to provide this service for you here at Norwalk Hospital. We'll have to transfer you. Where would you like to go?" And they may say to me, "But my neighbor got the same procedure here." And I would say to them, "But your neighbor came in with a STEMI, and we were able to do that, but we're not able to provide, quote-unquote, elective PCI for you."
Okay. And then you wouldn't abandon them. You'd send them to one of the four hospitals, right?
No, we would not abandon them. We would find a place to care for them. That's correct.
Okay. And you have been able to find a place. There has been satisfaction of that need. Even though you don't like it, there has been a satisfaction of that need for you to get those patients to those other hospitals.
I mean, Attorney Monahan, you know, the way you describe this, it sounds like an ideal world out there. But you and I know that there are nights when it's cold, when it's freezing, when it's snowing, when the traffic is backed up. And so, you know, it's not something that's always done very easily. And as I think I mentioned earlier, in the midst of a COVID pandemic, sometimes you do get an answer where, you know what, "We're just too crazy right now. We can't take that patient."
All four hospitals at the same time have said that to you?
I didn't say that.
Well, what I'm really trying to understand, doctor, because you seem to be saying that there is a restriction, if I, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're under oath, and I want to know whether there are four hospitals within your region that you can transfer elective PCI patients to? Are you telling me that you are unable to transfer patients in need of those elective services to any one of those four at any given time?
If you're asking me, is there a capacity in the area to say, "Okay, somebody somewhere can do this PCI," I would say that there is capacity. But when you think about access, that's a different story. And I think access is limited at times, certainly.
All right. Well, I suppose we can let the Office of Healthcare Strategy decide whether capacity and access and how they'll judge that under the legislative standard of whether there's an unmet need. And lastly, were you in charge of creating the methodology or retaining the methodology for both in the original application and in the prefiled testimony, answers to questions, supplementing the projections of elective PCIs?
I participated in that process. I wouldn't necessarily say I was in charge of it.
Can you point me to any benchmark studies, statistical sampling methodology, or outside consultant that you used to come up with that analysis that led you to the supplement?
No, there was no outside entity that led us to that. It was really an evolutionary process. I think, as Dr. Murphy described earlier, it's pretty common in CON applications. And we, when we looked at our FY21 numbers, we certainly were interested to see that the annualized number was about 80, a little bit over 80 STEMI's, which, when we think about, and again, we talked about this a little bit earlier, whether it's a four-to-one ratio or an eight-to-one ratio, we would be well over the 200 threshold. And I believe that's borne out even by Stanford's own numbers, which I think had less STEMI's than Norwalk, but had certainly, I think, over 200 PCIs.
Okay. And you said you were a participant. Who were the other participants in putting that methodology together?
Well, I don't know about, I don't understand what you mean by methodology. We looked at our numbers, and they are what they are.
I guess, I'm sorry, if I'm... Who's the "we"?
The team, our strategy team, Sally Hurley, I think you heard her name mentioned earlier, Kelly Stock, who is the Vice President for the Heart and Vascular Institute at NuVance, and some of our finance team as well.
Can you skip it? Ms. Mitchell, may I have one moment?
Yes.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
All right. Any follow-up, Attorney Tucci?
No, thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. No questions.
All right. All yours, Attorney Monahan.
Thank you.
If Dr. Yekka is available? Hi, doctor.
Hello.
One minute. Turn some pages. Doctor, similarly, first of all, what is your, and I apologize, I know you said this, and it's in your testimony, but what is your specialty?
I'm an interventional cardiologist.
And do you recognize the 2014 consensus document that I referenced just before the previous testimony as the most current consensus document with a recommendation of the best practice of a minimum threshold of 200 PCIs for a facility without onsite surgery? PCIs for a facility without onsite surgery?
So, yes, that document from two thousand and fourteen does relate to elective PCI in hospitals without cardiothoracic surgery backup. And in response to your numerical comment, it does state that it is recommended, and again, it is a guideline, that two hundred PCIs should strive to achieve, but there's also a comment in there about if labs are unable to get to that two hundred threshold annually, they can have quote unquote stringent systemic and process protocols in place with close monitoring of clinical outcomes and additional strategies that promote adequate operation and catheterization laboratory staff expertise throughout through collaborative relationships with larger volume facilities, which is so again, my point in emphasizing that is that the number of two hundred is there, but it also acknowledges that two hundred may not be an absolute number that has to be present for all facilities.
How long have you been with NuVance? Or is it Milton? I apologize. How long have you been in your position?
In my, I've been for about two years now, approximately two years.
Have you had any experience before today? In or surrounding the CON process, the state of Connecticut?
I have not, I have not been part of a CO and application prior to this process.
And aside from the written testimony provided, did you, did you participate in any type of research or calculations or any type of work that went into the actual substance of the application or any supplemental filings?
No, one of the reasons why I wore my scrubs today, so you knew I wasn't a numbers person. So I was not involved in the numerical evaluation of the program or the or the PCI volumes.
And lastly, do you have? And I think you just answered it, but I, just to be sure, do you have any experience in extrapolation of data? Well, let me just point you to your testimony. You do refer to extrapolating transfer data to an annualized projection when paired with current primary PC high volume trends fiscal two thousand year fiscal year two thousand and twenty one. And the fact that transfer data doesn't capture all eligible patients who go elsewhere for elective PCIs show that there is more than sufficient volume for Norwalk Hospital to support a primary elective PCI service in accordance with national guideline guidelines. If that's on page it's not numbered, but let me get it. At the bottom of page four of your written testimony.
So you'd have, if you don't mind, just repeat from where you read to
Sure. On the bottom of that page, I read from the fifth line up with the starting of the word. Extrapolate.
Okay.
And the reason, I'll let you read it now.
Sure.
The reason I ask the question is, as you just explained, that you're a numbers person. How is it that you you started voicing and then have voiced an opinion on extrapolation and volume trends and things of that sort?
Because one of the things, you know, in my position, you know, we have had numerous discussions here at NuVance in regards to what our transfer volumes have been, in addition to the data in terms of our primary PCI volume. So if you you know, as an organization, we've come to realization putting those numbers together that we should be able to achieve more than two hundred PCIs. And this is just inpatient volume that we're talking about. We're not even including any outpatient elective PCI. So that's where we came with that data. Or that where I extrapolated from that data.
Okay. And then if you, the same question asked before is, is when you say we, was there a group of you that put your heads together to do that?
So there is a group of of people here and the data is sometimes, you know, as I'm presented to the data, but I'm not part of the the committee that formulates that data. So I can't really help you there, but I'm not part of that group specifically.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more question. And I want to go back to the completeness responses, which deal with the transfer of elected, present transfer of elective PCI pieces from Norwalk Hospital. I'm looking at page six of seven on the on the completeness questions. And this, it's number six, and it says, provide the number of patients within the primary service area that were transferred from Norwalk Hospital to Danbury Hospital. And of those patients transferred, provide the number of patients who received an elective PCI post-transfer. You see where I'm referring to, and I'll give you time to get there.
I do.
And there's an OHS Table One, patient transfers from Norwalk Hospital to Danbury Hospital and post-transfer elective PCIs. See that?
I do.
You see that it's approximately, well, at thirty four percent of all these patient transfers, it's 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 about a one third percentage. Or one third of the total transfers that end up having elective PCIs. You see that?
Roughly.
What's the explanation for that?
I'm not part of any of these cases. I can't explain that to you. I mean, I don't know how you, how you want me to answer that question. I mean, I don't know how to answer that question. You know, cases are done on an individual basis. So when a patient gets a transfer in a cardiac cath, and if you decided to connect to PCI. It's on a case to case basis. So I can't explain those. I can't explain that.
Okay. Are you often part of the decision to make the transfer?
Oftentimes, yes.
And do you often get involved in the decision to make transfers of patients from Norwalk Hospital to hospitals other than Danbury Hospital?
We always ask the patient what their preference is, and if they decide, again, we don't try to convince patients to go one place or the other. If they have a strong preference for one hospital or the other, we do, I certainly acknowledge that.
And I'm not asserting that you don't. I was just trying to understand if just the way you're structured, if if that's if that is what, you know, regardless, it's not just Danbury that you're focused on. It could be any of the hospitals that can absorb a transfer from Norwalk Hospital, you could be involved in that process?
I can be involved, but you know, the one thing is a patient, you know, once a patient meets a physician, oftentimes they want that physician to be their provider. So I do not provide services at other hospitals outside of Danbury Hospital and Norwalk Hospital. So there would have to be a change in their cardiac care if they were transferred. So they have to see different interventionalists, different cardiologists, different ostolists, different nurses, different PCA. So that is part of that equation.
And do you often deal with the community physicians that are the community cardiologists that may be the attending physician for any of these patients?
Of course, I think that's a natural part of my job to deal with referring physicians.
Okay. So and in those cases, is it your experience that the attending physician provides some continuity of care? With respect to the patient and their transfer to a different hospital?
So are you in reference to the general cardiologist that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. So I mean, they do provide some continuity of care. Sometimes in the hospital, but sometimes not in the hospital as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, and I have no other questions.
Follow up, Attorney Tucci?
No questions for Dr. Yekka. Thank you, Hearing Officer.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Yekka.
Thank you.
Hello, Doctor.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Okay, thank you. And Doctor, to start without, I understand you're Chief of Cardiology at Norwalk Hospital. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the you know, the questions you've heard over and over again is, and I'd like to ask you as a cardiologist is do you view the consensus document published in two thousand and fourteen by the three societies that I have mentioned? That recommends the two hundred minimum threshold for facilities that doing elective PCI that do not have surgical backup? Do you view that and see that as the existing consensus guideline that has not been abolished, retracted, or in any way vacated?
Well, you know, I have experience with clinical epidemiology and and the statistics and the guidelines have different level of evidence. The highest level of evidence comes from randomized clinical control trials, prospective. The lowest form of evidence comes from registry. And the reason for that is that when you rely on registry data, there's lots of confounders that can trip you up. And the people who wrote the guidelines were very wise because they're not relying on randomized controlled trials that determine that two hundred was the number. What they were relying on was registry data. So in the interest of making sure that any program that is doing PCI is doing it in the highest quality fashion, should do it and meet their standards, which not only includes following data, but making sure that there's good quality assurance programs, oversight and the like. And I think that the two hundred PCI number comes from a signal from registry data that comes from the early two thousands. And I think that in our case, we we believe we're going to be over two hundred. I'm confident we'll be over two hundred. But I, what I can assure you is our commitment to a high quality program. We are in partnership with Cleveland Clinic, considered by U S World News and Report, the number one cardiac hospital in the nation. They'll be working with us, with our network in Danbury and with us in Norwalk. And I can assure you that no one here wants to be associated with anything but the highest quality program.
I certainly respect that view, Doctor. And what I guess what I'm you know, was trying to understand is in the world of evolving medical literature, medical guidelines, medical studies. At some point, medical guidelines, I suppose, will or do change, but the medical recommendation of that consensus group as of today, that two hundred threshold. In addition to the various studies that you've talked about, but that number still is in place and hasn't been displaced by the cardiology community.
I think it's part of a holistic approach. That is part of the holistic approach. It's not the only approach to determining a quality program.
Fair enough. In your testimony, you referred to there being a regulatory barrier preventing Norwalk Hospital from obtaining an elective PCI for its, the ability to perform elective PCI for its patients. If you needed me to refer you to the page, it's the second page of the document. What did you mean by regulatory barrier? It's down near the bottom of page of under section one. About four lines up.
Well, I think that you know, it's clear that Connecticut requires a significant need for certain services. Elective PCI at a hospital without surgical backup falls under that, and we currently don't have a CO one for that service.
And and that's, okay, and that's what you you see as the barrier at this moment that you are attempting to overcome in this application?
That's why we're here.
Do you do you recognize that that the the withdrawn? I have no other questions. Thank you.
Any follow up, Attorney Tucci?
No, thank you, Hearing Officer. No follow up for this witness.
All right. Anything additional, Attorney Monahan?
Well, as far as cross-examined examination, no. And I don't I didn't know whether closing remarks on the agenda means closing remarks from lawyers or that's just closing remarks by the panel. But so, nothing else for me, but I, but I do have a one request to make before the end of the hearing.
Absolutely. I'll give you a chance. I'm actually going to ask that we take a little five minute break so I can confer with my colleagues, because we have a few questions that we want to ask that some of some of the attorneys in this hearing didn't touch on. So and and some of them, actually you did. So we just want to make sure that we are taking off the list of questions that we have, what's already been discussed, and we want to make sure that we get the other things that have not been discussed. So maybe we could have five minutes till four forty. We'll come back and we'll ask our questions and then we'll go to closing statements. Let me just ask, is there anybody here that has signed up for public comment? Anybody from, you know, any public officials, anything like that? Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we'll come back on at 4:40. Just waiting to see if attorney Monahan's right. I see you. I see you. Okay. All right. So we're going to go back on the record. We're going to start with OHS's questions. I think we're going to request some late files. We'll see if there's anybody that wants to render a public comment. If not, I'll make an announcement about that. And then we'll go to closing comments. All right. So Brian, you want to take it away?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for answering my questions. A general question for the applicant to begin with. Let me just preface it by saying, you know, a lot of the information has been submitted to the application through prefiled testimony and heard today in testimony. But I just want to sort of ask like sort of one more time to get sort of your top reasons for the request for this proposal. So let me go ahead and ask the question. So given that elective PCIs are scheduled procedures, the volumes you have reported on page seven of the prefiled testimony show mostly declining volumes. And there are four And there are four other elective PCI capable hospitals in the area. Why is there a need for a new elective PCI program at Norwalk Hospital? So again, maybe you could give me the top three, you know, five reasons why you think it's appropriate.
Would Dr. Murphy or Dr. Worszowski like to answer this question?
Hi, yes, here I am. So thank you for that question. I think that what we've seen in terms of volumes for PCI in our system has actually been increasing volumes for PCI. Not dramatically, but certainly we have seen some increasing volumes. And when we look at the last six months of this fiscal year, we have seen certainly an increase in our STEMI volumes and an increase in other volumes related to cardiovascular disease. We have recently brought on two cardiologists to our group in Norwalk, largely because we saw a need that was not met. And that has led to increasing volumes for electrophysiology and for other procedures within our cath lab. And so when we think about kind of overall volume trends, we have to be careful not to make that a reason to not look at more specific areas and specific needs. And I think the other reason, or one of the other reasons that we're making this application is because we know that we can deliver this care safely. And the thought of transferring patients without real true need to transfer them is not good medical care, frankly. And when we think about elective PCI, and you mentioned that elective PCI was a scheduled procedure. I think, again, I would emphasize that the patients that we're talking about, or at least, I would say, a majority of the patients that we're talking about are not patients who are well and scheduling something like an office visit. They are patients who are admitted to the hospital who are in need of a, and actually an urgent procedure. And some of them are scheduled and some of them are not scheduled. And most of the transfer patients, unfortunately for them, are not scheduled. They're added on because they're coming as a as a, an add-on to the receiving hospital's schedule. So they tend to be done later in the day and actually have a much poorer experience overall, I would say, than one who, let's say, is admitted to a hospital and is scheduled for first case the next day.
Okay, thank you, doctor. Kind of in coordination with that. I know you gave initial estimates in the application and in the prefiled testimony. Those numbers have increased. I'm still not fully clear the exact numbers you're projecting now and how you arrived at those numbers. So if you can, and if not, and we probably would need to get this in writing as well. Describe in detail the methodology used to arrive that your new projection that Norwalk Hospital will perform well in excess of 200 PCI's and cite evidence to support your findings.
Sure. So again, I want to emphasize that we were conservative on our initial estimates. We are certainly cognizant of the fact that many patients who could be could undergo a cardiac catheterization to look for coronary artery disease who are in Norwalk's service area, or sometimes even in Norwalk Hospital, don't undergo that particular procedure because if they needed a PCI, they wouldn't be able to get it at Norwalk Hospital. So the, the numbers of diagnostic cardiac cath's are, I would say, pretty, pretty grossly under what would be happening if we did have an elective PCI program. The, the numbers, again, for the last six months of this fiscal year in terms of STEMI are, I think, very informative. The data that I would say to back up the estimates of over 200 cases, which, and again, this is kind of an evolutionary process for me in terms of seeing the data and, and learning frankly, a little bit about those ratios that are reported in the literature, whether they be the, you know, eight to one ratio that the Seaport trial reported on, or even our own state's data that would say that the ratio is at least, you know, a three to one, four to one ratio, if not more. So when we think about the burden of coronary disease in the Norwalk service area, and we look at the numbers of patients who are presenting with STEMI and extrapolate that based on what we know is in the literature on estimates, or actually not estimates, but real data when you compare the numbers of elective PCI versus the numbers of STEMI, that's where we get that number from.
All right, doctor, let me just follow up with that, because Dr. Martin had said something a little bit different. In fact, saying, stating that he thought cardiac cath's were a better indicator of who would require a PCI. So is there any documented evidence to confirm the relationship between either, you know, cardiac cath's or primary PCI to that of projected elective PCI volume?
You know, some of it depends on, on the population and what one is getting a cardiac catheterization for. Some cardiac catheterizations are not done for acute coronary syndromes in anticipation of a PCI. Some are done for valvular disease and the, and the rate of PCI in those patients would be certainly much lower. But I want to go back to what I was saying before because I want to make it clear. If, if, it is really frankly disingenuous to say, because Norwalk Hospital's cardiac cath volume is low, that that's a reason that their PCI volume would be low. And again, the reason for that is if we have an inpatient here who we have a high suspicion is going to need a PCI, we won't even do that cardiac catheterization here. Unless the patient really says, you know what, I'll undergo two procedures. I want to have it here. So those patients are transferred out before they even have a cardiac catheterization. And similarly, on the ambulatory side, if there's a patient in the office with a markedly positive stress test that you anticipate is going to need a PCI, those patients are done at another hospital. And leave the community.
All right, Attorney Mitchell, we're gonna talk about the late files later. Okay. All right.
Yes, we will.
Next question. Page thirty-seven, the application, the, you provide projected utilization by service. Describe how you determined these projected cardiac cath volumes were expected to increase more than twofold between 2020 and 2021. It looks like OHS Table Five, it's the bottom of page thirty-seven. Cardiac cath go from eighty-three to two hundred and three.
Okay, we're just pulling that up.
Okay, true.
And for those answering and speaking, if you just identify yourselves when you speak, would be appreciated. Thank you. This is the court reporter.
Yeah, this is Dr. Worszowski. So, you know, again, that goes to a couple of things. One is we are seeing increased volumes in general with our cardiologists, new cardiologists here, increased utilization of their services. And exactly what I was saying a couple of minutes ago, which was that right now, the patients who are in need of a PCI or who are thought to be in need of a PCI are not having a cardiac catheterization done here. And that, I would say, is the majority of cardiac catheterizations that we do. The majority of cardiac catheterizations that we do are done looking for coronary artery disease in anticipation of stenting.
So they're not having it done at Norwalk because they're saying basically, well, if I need a PCI, an elective PCI, I won't be able to have it done there? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay. And you said you hired two new cardiologists? Is that some of the?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Yek has been with us a couple of years, and most recently, we brought on Dr. Menendez.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. So page seven notes that while Norwalk Hospital anticipates performing more than 200 PCI's per year, is important to consider that the volume standard for PCI programs of 200 annually has been questioned in recent year in the literature. I know you've touched on this a little bit, but please elaborate on the statement as to why institutional volumes have been questioned specifically.
I just want to make sure that I understand the question. Are you asking whether I believe that 200 number is relevant, important, or are you asking a different?
Yeah, no, yeah, the statement was that basically that 200 is, that 200 number is sort of being questioned in some recent years in the literature, that it may not be the number, the appropriate number. So I just wanted you to follow up on that, to, you know, your opinion about, about that.
Oh, sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Carter, just before Dr. Worszowski answers, could, could, I didn't catch the page reference.
Page, page seven, sorry, page seven. Page seven of the prefiled testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so again, I think Dr. Lamet's pointed out that, that, that number is a number that is not based on randomized clinical trials, or really any clinical trial per se, trying to look at that. The strength of the relationship between volume and outcomes really was much more, what's, was much stronger in, in the, what we call plain old angioplasty era, when we didn't have coronary stents. Since that time, that relationship really has been, I would say weakened and questioned much more. And when, when you think of that, about it, just in terms of common sense, if you will, to think that a program that's doing 190 PCI's is, you know, materially worse in quality than a program doing 205 PCI's, it just, you know, goes against common sense, right? We all know that quality is related to many more things than any absolute number. So although, again, in this stage of looking at our volumes and the, through, you know, the exercises that we've been through, I am confident that we will exceed that number. But I think that number really does need to be taken a little bit with a grain of salt.
And one, one final question, doctor. How do you describe sort of the relationship between operator and institutional volumes, the two different thresholds? How do they interrelate?
Well, you know, operative volume, the numbers for recommended volumes have been decreasing over the years. I think you've heard the recommended volume for a PCI operator on the most recent recommendations is fifty per year.
Fifty.
Yep. It used to be seventy-five. The, the two go hand in hand to some degree in that you know, the, the volume data for operators is relatively weak when it comes to looking at any specific number. But we do know that there is a weak overall directional association. Our physicians who are working in our STEMI program in Norwalk will certainly maintain those minimal volumes. And I'm thinking offhand, I think all of them will be working at fairly high-volume centers in addition to Norwalk Hospital.
So the Danbury too, more than likely.
Danbury and, and other centers as well.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think that's all I have, Michaela.
Okay. See here. So page eight of the prefiled testimony states that the ability to offer elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital will reduce the cost of care by eliminating unnecessary transfers and enabling timely medical interventions. How will this affect overall healthcare costs and consumers' out-of-pocket costs?
I may, I may ask, phone a friend on this one, but, but I would just say this. You know, the it, it certainly, when we think about length of stay for a patient, when you think about them coming into a hospital and then getting worked up, and then the decision is made to transfer them, and then they're getting reworked up at the receiving hospital and getting put on for the next day for cardiac catheterization, I think we can all see how that increases the overall length of stay in, in, in any particular hospital for that patient. The cost of an ambulance ride with EMS services, I, I think, is significant. And you have to add that on to the, you know, the equation in terms of cost for our healthcare system. And you've got to backfill that EMS service for a patient who may need it. And so we're, we're kind of overall increasing the cost of care throughout many things. There's a lot of ripple, ripple effects and unintended consequences as with, is with a lot of things. I'm gonna see if Dr. Murphy has anything to add to that.
Thanks, Mark. I, I do think that was a, a comprehensive answer and an excellent one. The only thing that, that I would add, hearing officer, is that, once again, you, you have to recognize that we, let's say, within our system have worked very hard aid to come to an agreement with the payer, whomever that payer might be, Medicare or a commercial payer, or even potentially Medicaid, and say, listen, we're responsible for the entire episode of care from soup to nuts. We have coordinated who's gonna do what, in what sequence, what tests will be done, which tests won't be done. And to the extent, to the extent that we spend more than we've agreed to, the onus is on us. That, that's a problem for us, that there isn't this notion that, well, it's not my problem. It, it in fact is. And to the extent that, you know, we can generate high-quality care cost efficiently, everybody wins. When the patient is transferred out of the system, there is no, there may be no such relationship. And the receiving hospital can do what it wants, follow a different protocol. And again, having transferred lots of patients for many years, what inevitably and unfortunately happens is the tests get repeated. Oftentimes, somebody says, at least in my field, you know what, we can't find the film, or these MRIs don't run on our machines, or I can't find the software, so just run the, the MRI again, or, or do the EKG, or do the echo, or, or do whatever the particular imaging study is, or let's rerun the labs. Or as Dr. Worszowski said, imaging study is, or let's rerun the labs. Or as Dr. Woschowski said, you know, that was yesterday. We were booked. It was a late case. Uh, we didn't realize it was Friday. All of a sudden, now it's Monday morning and the renal studies, the renal functions have to be repeated. So there is this inevitable result, in my view, that tests get repeated that otherwise would not have been repeated, that the patient now is at an institution that may or may not be part of his or her insurance plan. And, uh, he or she is now responsible for significant bills, where they were under the impression that if they had a heart attack, God forbid, that they were covered. Not only do they have to then contemplate the issue of the facility itself may be out of network, and I don't have out-of-network coverage, but so too may the doctor or doctors plural, that that entire team is going to have the opportunity to bill that patient. All of those services would have been covered on the bundled contract that, that existed at the home institution. None of those services are going to be covered potentially at the receiving institution, if it's a, if it's a transfer. So the, the consequences, the financial consequences are substantial to the patient, no matter what kind of insurance they have, if, if it's a non-participating provider, both in terms of co-insurance, co-pays, maximum out-of-pocket expenses. And, and that's the reason so many companies in America, and for that matter, the state of Connecticut itself, has spent so much time and reached out to so many healthcare providers to say, listen, we want you to sign up for these bundles of care so that we can begin to control costs while improving outcome. We, as a health system, have subscribed to that. That's not equally true across the county or for that matter, the state. But we believe it's, it's our responsibility as providers to try to contemplate and coordinate cost-efficient, high-quality care. And transfers fly in the face of that effort.
Thank you for that. Um, just a follow-up question. So you've explained it to me so that at least I could understand how, you know, how this could increase costs. But is there a way, or have you been able to quantify the cost savings that would occur if these transfers were eliminated?
Well, uh, it would be difficult for, for me to sit here because a, a, as you know, I don't have access to the, to the fee schedules of other institutions. But I can tell you that from the, the payer's perspective, the payer being either the state government, the federal government, or the employer, they're all migrating to, to this notion, either of saying, uh, there's going to be an accountable care arrangement where they call it the Medicare Shared Savings Program, as you know, or the Next Generation ACO, or what is becoming even more popular, the Bundled Payment Coordinated Care Initiative out of, uh, Medicare did it. We participated in 22 of those bundles. Now the commercial market and the employers are moving more and more to these episodes of care because they have found that that's where most of the expense lies. When somebody gets really sick and needs these life-saving but expensive interventions, it's very important that the care be coordinated. So they have told us basically, by virtue of having to pay the bills, that this is where the savings are. These have to be priorities. And given the fact that cardiovascular is the leading cause of death, we feel it's incumbent upon us to be responsible and to be able to offer bundled, cost-effective, high-quality, accessible services to people that live in our area, including those who have no insurance whatsoever. Again, I can tell you, having sent lots of patients, um, to, to some coronary centers, if you don't have insurance, you're out of luck when you try to go someplace else.
Thank you. All right. I think that is it for that question. I do have another question. Let's see here. So I think we asked this, I, I was listening to Dr. Morschowski's testimony and I think that he was talking about, and Brian May, my, my colleague, Brian Carney, may have touched on this. But so, um, I just want to make sure that I've got it. So I think that there was a discussion of a four-to-one kind of ratio used to determine, um, or project how many, um, PCIs might need, might be needed. Um, and I, I think I wanted to ask, uh, Dr. Woschowski, if there's any literature that goes along with that? I think, I think Brian may have asked you this, but I didn't cross it off my list.
Yes, uh, he did. And I, I mentioned, um, our own, you know, New York State, uh, no, I'm sorry, New York State, Connecticut's data, um, the NCDR data that was, uh, presented earlier.
Yep.
Um, with, uh, several of our hospitals, uh, throughout, uh, the Norwalk Southern Fairfield County area. Um, and, um, also if, um, we look at that Seaport trial, that mentioned, I believe, an eight-to-one ratio. Um, and, uh, I think that that has, that, that ratio has come down somewhat over time. Um, but even today, using, uh, whether it be Stanford's numbers or Danbury's numbers, uh, we know that that ratio is, is around four-to-one, uh, and sometimes higher.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I think the other question that I had for you is if there's any data that you could share with us about how COVID has impacted the ability to transfer patients out of Norwalk to other hospitals who may be requiring elective and you can't perform it there?
Yeah, so, um, I, you know, I, I cannot give you, uh, specifics about the transfers out of Norwalk Hospital for elective PCI during COVID. What I will say about, uh, COVID is that, as you know, patients have delayed coming in for acute problems, um, and, and a lot of those acute problems were heart attacks. Uh, we were seeing patients much later on in their disease process. Um, I think that the notion, um, to a patient who did, let's say, decide to come in during COVID, the notion of saying to them, okay, well, you know, you were, you were, you got over your fears of coming in to a familiar hospital, but now we're going to transfer you away from your family to a less familiar hospital or completely unfamiliar hospital, um, I think would not go over well. Um, and, and again, I want to emphasize also how incredibly busy the hospitals were throughout the state during COVID. And the thought of taking transfers, uh, during that time, it, it was daunting. Because everybody's running on fumes, taking care of, um, very, very sick patients. And the thought of then admitting a transferred patient and going through all their data all over again, um, is, is just horribly difficult to think about doing during that time.
Okay, um, just to follow up, do you believe that that period where, um, the hospitals were, you know, there was a surge and they weren't able to take patients as readily as they would pre-COVID? Do you think that that's something that might be an anomaly or something that's ongoing?
Oh, I think it's ongoing. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, I'm not an infectious disease expert or epidemiologist, but I, I do know that, um, we are not through this pandemic yet, that we are seeing hospitalized patients still. We're seeing very sick hospitalized patients. And so I, I think it is an ongoing problem. I don't know what we're going to be facing next year as it relates to COVID, but, um, I certainly wouldn't be surprised if it was affecting our healthcare system in some way.
Okay. Thank you for your responses. Um, I have a question for Dr. Lamnet. So, uh, Dr. Dr. Lamnet, you indicated that, um, there is an underutilization of PCI that about 30% of the people who need it don't get it, you know, 30 people who are, uh, 30% of people who are appropriate don't get it. And I just wanted to understand if that 30%, um, you know, how does that relate specifically to, um, Norwalk Hospital's primary service area? Is, was that just kind of like a national percentage?
Yeah, that's a good question. That, that's, those studies, um, and, and there are lots of studies that are, are concerned about underutilization of care that can improve, improve people's, uh, lives and decrease mortality. Um, and PCI is certainly one of them. Those studies are based nationally. Um, and that's, that's, you know, we have to assume until proven otherwise that we're no different. And what's, I hopefully highlighted was the concern that people whose primary hospital do not have elective PCI are more likely to be underserved compared to those that do go to hospitals that have, uh, elective PCI capability.
Okay. Thank you. I think that that is all the questions that I have for the applicant. I did have a few follow-up questions for the interveners, witnesses. Thank you, Dr. Lamnet.
Thank you.
So, um, and the next couple of questions are for Dr. Martin, if he's still available.
He is.
So, Dr. Martin, you testified that, um, you know, the update in the numbers, um, the volume numbers or projections by the applicant were, and I'm quoting you hard to swallow. What do you mean by that?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm truly took great care in making this application. And they had plenty of time to do it. And then to update the numbers based on a brief uptick in some primary PCIs just seems serious to me.
Um, what do you mean by, when you say brief uptick?
So that there, they, they publish their numbers for primary PCI from 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20. And typically those numbers were 60 to 70. And then based on partial year having a few more primary PCI than other years, uh, they up, up their estimate. And it, it, based on partial numbers, fiscal year 2021, I believe they've estimated 80 some of primary PCIs based off a partial year. And then based on that, you know, use this multiplier that really there is no literature about, you know, it is true that nationwide, you know, back in the Seaport time, this eight, eight X multiplier was typical nationwide. And now it's more like three or four times as many non-primary, you know, elective PCIs as our primary PCIs nationwide. That varies widely by institution. It's driven by, uh, practice patterns, um, where facilities that get outside referrals, where people choose to go there, tertiary centers will have a much higher number of elective PCIs. For example, Cleveland Clinic publishes their numbers every year. It's typically 25 to 30 times as many elective PCIs as primary PCIs, whereas other centers that are not referral centers, um, where people are not choosing to go to, the number may be much lower. Um, and nationwide, average, it, it is about four, uh, elective PCIs per primary PCI.
So you said that, um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said since 2003, there were studies that showed that, um, elective PCI is overutilized, that, um, you know, practitioners are doing too many. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. You, you know, the, the appropriate use criteria were established by CMS mainly as a, as a response to an understood overuse of, of, uh, current PCI. And it's in the, um, American Heart Association's, uh, what's it called? You know, highlight elective PCI is something that's overutilized. Um, there were a couple of big trials that I, I think I've mentioned in my written testimony. It showed that for, for, uh, elective PCI, patients who are not in the hospital with a heart attack, that for most of those patients, medical treatment was just as good as PCI in terms, you know, and that, you know, we, we like to say that PCI is a lifesaving procedure. I, I like, I would like that to be true. And, and sometimes it is. If you come into the heart attack, you open your artery, it's, it's a lifesaving procedure. It dramatically improves your rate of survival. But if you're seen in the office and have a stress test and have some chest pain, we bring you in to PCI. And that's what a lot of these patients are. It, it doesn't, you know, in, in big studies, did not show improvement in survival. And even in terms of symptom improvement, was not significantly better than medicines alone.
Is, when you say medicines alone, is that what you mean by medical treatment?
Correct.
Okay. And then one other thing, actually not one other thing. So there was another thing that I heard you say that you, that, you know, in terms of PCI that we're in a stagnant market. What do you mean by that?
Yeah, so the, the nationwide, the, the number of PCI is actually, despite a growing population, has not gone up over the last five to 10 years at least. I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Uh, but, you know, it peaked some years ago. Um, and, you know, all the projections, you know, from, from the consultant groups and the, the nationwide numbers are, there's not significant increase year over year. Um, the, the, the numbers are basically flat to slight decline over the years. And a lot of that's driven by this, you know, this, uh, understanding that ECI may, may have been overutilized in the past.
All right. And then the last question for you is, you know, I've heard, um, a lot of discussion about giving, um, the different factors and the guidelines, the appropriate weight. Um, and so, you know, um, whether the applicant is going to be very close to 200, over 200, you know, there, there, it sounds like their argument is there are other things also to consider in terms of quality program, um, that, you know, oh, I just should look at and focus on when making the decision. And so I heard you say, you know, you, you talked about how the guidelines indicated previously that the threshold institutional volume was 400, that was reduced to 200. Um, it hasn't been reduced since then. Um, so it's just like the guy, you know, I just, I'm trying to understand um, so that I can make a recommendation to the executive director about how she should go. And can you just explain for me, why, why, why is the 200, uh, operator volume threshold? Why, why do you believe, or based upon what you've read, why, why should we stick with that hard and fast?
So I, I, I don't think it's a number set in stone, uh, you know, right? You, you balancing reality versus, you know, what's optimal? And I, I think, you know, what might be optimal would be, say, 1,000. You know, it might be a better number, honestly. You know, if we all did 200 PCIs per year, per operator and 1,000 in the center, you probably would get, you know, better outcomes than what's available right now. But that's not reality in the US. It is in some other countries, but here that, you know, we, we train more interventional cardiologists, we have hospitals all over the place that decide they want to have a cath lab. You know, we have to, you know, the states and, and, and have to, have to deal with reality. Um, and so I, I think it's with that compromise, you know, what, what societies have come up with is that, that 200 is a good number. You know, I, I, I think clearly 100 is not a good number. You know, I, I think in, you know, 400 is even too high because it, it was unreasonable and that, you know, that not enough places would need it. Um, so, you know, could, could that number be 150 or 250 or, you know, I don't think there's any magic about the number, but it's, it's a parsing reality with what's, what's optimal in terms of patient care and patient outcomes.
This is Brian Carney, just, just to chime in, um, Dr. Martin, you, by 200, you're, you're speaking specifically about institutional volume, correct? This is Brian Carney. Just, just to chime in, um, Dr. Martin, you, by two hundred, you're, you're speaking specifically about institutional volume, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what, you know, our, our guideline suggests is, is the, the reasonable number to use and, and that is a minimum.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't believe I have any additional questions. I'm going to defer to, um, Jess, Jessica Regal.
Good afternoon. Um, my first question is for Dr. Worschowski. Hi, doctor. Um, on page forty-five, um, of the application, there are, um, some assertions about the Cleveland Clinic. Could you give us some detailed examples to explain how Norwalk's, Norwalk Hospital's affiliation with the Cleveland Clinic will affect cost and quality measures related to the proposed elective PCI services?
Sure. Um, so a- as you know, and as was mentioned earlier, uh, the Cleveland Clinic, um, is, is really regarded as, as essentially the top cardiovascular institution, um, in the country and probably the world. Um, they do thousands of interventions per year. And what we've established with them is a very close affiliation in Danbury Hospital, uh, after a programmatic assessment. And that programmatic assessment is currently ongoing in Norwalk Hospital. And that will lead to an affiliation with the Cleveland Clinic as well. That program is, is one that focuses on quality. And it's a collaborative effort. Uh, it will be a collaborative effort between Norwalk Hospital and the Norwalk Hospital cath lab staff and, uh, the Cleveland Clinic staff. It goes beyond just physician relationships and physician interactions. Um, it, it goes to nursing and operational leader interactions. And it really covers, uh, everything from things like what are the best care pathways, uh, for patients? What are the best order sets? Um, how can you decrease, decrease costs by opportunities in the supply chain? How can you decrease costs by maintaining high quality? Uh, lowering adverse event rates, which can lead to prolonged hospitalizations? Discussing cases with the Cleveland Clinic. Um, and deciding what might be the best approach for a particular patient. In the unfortunate, uh, circumstance of an adverse event, reviewing those cases with the Cleveland Clinic so that we can get their insight, um, into what they may have, uh, done differently or, um, just get their insight into what, what their thoughts were on the case. It, we, we have regular meetings with them where we look at, um, case reviews, as I mentioned, but also compare ourselves to the Cleveland Clinic. They actually generate a report card for us that looks at our data and tells us really how we're doing compared to the Cleveland Clinic. So it's a, it's a constant effort and focus with them. And again, it goes beyond just the physicians. And it certainly includes the physicians, and that's a major focus. But it, it, it really encompasses the whole episode of care, you know, and, and care across the continuum of cardiovascular disease. The cath lab, um, and PCI programs are obviously a, a huge focus of that.
Thank you very much. Um, my next couple of questions are actually for the intervener. Um, the first one is the applicant states on page fifteen of the application that Norwalk Hospital's primary service area includes the towns of Norwalk, Westport, Wilton, New Canaan, and Weston, Connecticut. Are these towns covered by Stanford Hospital's cardiac program?
I guess at this point, Jessica says good evening. Uh, we're now move past five o'clock, so go from a good morning to good evening. Um, so I, I can address that question. So make sure I heard your question correctly, Jessica. So you're asking those five different towns listed as Norwalk service area, whether we consider those in our overall service area?
Correct.
We, we, we do. Uh, we, we look at both service areas as primary services and service area as well as our secondary service area based on where patients do seek care from, uh, Stanford. So when we look at the service area, Norwalk for sure. Um, and then secondarily, as we go out a little bit further.
May I ask who the last speaker was? This is the reporter.
Yeah, I am so sorry. This was Jonathan Bailey.
My next question is, do you have, um, at your disposal the numbers as far as how much of Stanford Hospital's PCI volume is derived from these towns?
I do not have that at my disposal. How many of you, you're asking how many PCI volumes that we get from these different, those five different towns? I don't have that readily available. I'm sorry.
Certainly would provide it in a, in a late filing if, if OHHS would like that.
Yes. And lastly, um, does Stanford Hospital have the capacity to perform additional PCIs at this time?
And Jessica, that's a great question and, um, appreciate the opportunity to address that. Sorry, we've got some team members coming in. Sorry. Well, we're going to lock one of the doors here real quickly. Um, sorry about that interruption. Uh, but your question, whether we have the ca- capacity to continue to grow, and we do have capacity to continue to grow. As I mentioned in my, uh, comments, we do have that ample capacity as we've looked at our ability to continue to expand, meet whatever needs are within the community. Uh, we've evaluated that and would certainly be able to satisfy any growth needs.
Do you know about how many additional PCIs could be performed safely at Stanford Hospital in a given year?
I would probably defer to my colleague, Dr. Martin, to more specifically address that if he has that information.
Sure. So I, uh, with current staffing and, uh, facilities, you know, we could certainly increase PCI volume by fifty percent at present. If without a problem and potentially more if we have space to grow if we needed to in the future.
Just for the clarity of the record, fifty percent of what?
So our current volume last fiscal year was three hundred and
Three hundred and eighty, something like that.
Three hundred and something, so. I, I that's a hundred and ninety more. To another hundred and ninety per year, I think we would easily be doable with current staffing and facilities.
Yes, three eighty-eight is a total for twenty, FY twenty. Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Dr. Martin, can I ask you one other question? Um, in your, when you were giving your, uh, testimony, you also said that you had to maintain a minimum threshold of three hundred. Can you explain what that, more about that?
Sure. I, I think Jonathan mentioned that, but
Oh, is it? It was Jonathan. Okay.
But anyway, I, I can, I can speak to that. Uh, the, uh, CMS, uh, rules for having a TAVR program, so trans catheter aortic valve replacement, uh, which is a valve replacement procedure that we do, uh, require, you know, higher volume than, than just continuing to do PCI because it's a specialized procedure. Um, and, and that three hundred per year volume is, uh, is required to be paid by CMS for the, for the valve procedure.
Overall, three hundred?
Three hundred PCIs yearly, correct? And then there are also, there are a number of other requirements, including how many of these TAVR procedures you do and certain staffing and, and equipment resources.
Can I just ask a follow-up? This is Brian Carney. So, so doctor, what, what happens if you fall below that three hundred minimum?
Uh, well, the risk would be that you would stop getting paid to do the TAVR procedures and effectively have to shut down the TAVR program. Um, you know, I, I don't think we would be under any scrutiny right now for the volume because of COVID. But if going forward, we were routinely less than three hundred, you would risk losing that program. And, you know, the, you know, ability to treat, uh, patients locally with TAVR.
Great. Thank you.
This is the last question for you, Dr. Martin, and I promise. What is the TAVR program?
The, the aortic valve is the valve that lets blood out of your heart when it pumps out to your body.
Yeah.
Um, and it's pretty common, a- as you get older, the valve stiffens up. And in some people, it narrows and, and fails. Um, and that can be deadly. And historically, that would be treated by cutting the chest open, cutting out the valve and replacing with a new valve. Over the last fifteen years, uh, procedure where that's done from the inside and going in through the groin and taking a new valve to, to where the aortic valve is and replacing it from the inside. Basically, the new valve crushes the old valve out of the way and pops open. Um, has become the preferred treatment for most patients with aortic stenosis, the narrow valve there. Um, and, you know, we, we started a program here. Uh, it was shortly before I got here, six or seven years ago, and it's had significant growth over the last several years.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Attorney Monahan.
I'm sorry to interrupt if you were about to speak, Ms. Mitchell.
That's okay.
There's my oversight, but in one of your questions about the cardiac, uh, issue, and I forget exactly. So the two shoulders movement was Dr. Martin and Dr. Bala. And I, I do believe Dr. Bala had a responsive statement to make in response to one of your questions. Would it be possible that he could address? He remembers the question, if he could address it for you? Two hundred, did you want me to? Hey, he have permission to come to the table?
Oh, yes. I thought he was coming. Yes.
Hi, it's Dr. Bala. I just wanted to, to follow up on, uh, my colleague, Dr. Martin. He mentioned, um, uh, talked about, uh, the two hundred criteria, that question you asked, that asked about. And, uh, um, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, in terms of that number for any quality and safety parameter, procedural parameter, um, some cutoff does have to be chosen. And I just do want to reiterate from, from the guidelines that um, was written in those guidelines that we've talked about from two thousand and thirteen, that operation of labs performing less than two hundred procedures annually that are not serving isolated or underserved populations be questioned. And then any laboratory that cannot maintain satisfactory outcome should be closed. And their rationale from a quality and safety perspective is that that was a number that was consistently associated with, with worse outcomes. And to, to the point that was raised and Dr. Martin, uh, brought up choosing wisely, which I had mentioned in my testimony. I think it's noteworthy that the single, uh, practice that the Society for Cardiovascular Angiography and Interventions put forth for potential inappropriate utilization is this statement in, in their Choosing Wisely campaign, which is avoid PCI in stable asymptomatic, asymptomatic patients with normal or only mildly abnormal adequate stress test results. And they put that recommendation forth as part of the Choosing Wisely campaign. We've been talking about the timeframe of the guidelines from two thousand and fourteen. This was put forward by the SCAI in two thousand and fourteen. But in this kind of period that has come after two thousand and fourteen, they reiterated this statement in two thousand and sixteen. And they reiterated it again in two thousand and eighteen, just to underscore the potential for over or inappropriate utilization.
Thank you, Dr. Bala. All right. I don't think we have any more questions, um, from the agency, double checking, um, Brian and Jessica. Nothing else? Okay, everybody shaking their head now. All right. So, um, thank you. All right. So I'm just going to ask, um, is there anybody here that wants to give public comment? All right. Um, Leslie, did anybody sign up? I just want to make sure we're not missing anybody.
No, Michaela, nobody signed up.
Thank you. Okay. So what I'm going to do, um, with regard to your public comment is I'm actually going to leave the record open. I usually leave it open only for a week, but in this case, I'm going to leave it open for two weeks because um, I'm going to ask for some information from both the applicant and the intervener in the form of late files. So anyone who wants to submit public comment, if you know somebody that wants to submit public comment and they haven't done so, they can do it in writing. Um, that would need to be, uh, sent to the Office of Health Strategy. Um, I believe that the email address for that is C O N, comment at C T dot gov. Did I get it right, Leslie?
It's actually always S at C T dot gov.
But it's O H S at C T dot gov. Say that again for me, Leslie, just
O H S at C T dot gov. We, we would get it either way at the C O N, but we've tried to eliminate that mailbox.
Oh, my goodness. And I keep resurrecting it. Okay, thank you. All right. So anyone who wants to, uh, submit public comment can do that, um, by May sixth. So in terms of late files, I just want to go over that and, uh, one other thing. Um, and then I'll let, uh, both the applicant and the intervener make, uh, closing statements. In terms of late files for the applicant, um, I wanted you to provide to us the methodology for your updated volume projections, including data sources and calculations. So just kind of explain that to us so we understand how you came up with them. And that would be for, uh, the next three fiscal years. And then for the intervener, um, information that we would be looking for from you are the number of elective in primary, uh, PCI procedures derived from, um, Norwalk's, uh, primary service area for the last three fiscal years. Let me just, I'm going to go ahead and turn to Attorney Tucci for, um, timeline for production of the methodology. Is a week okay?
Uh, Attorney Mitchell, if I could just ask, uh, for, for ten, ten, pardon me, ten days, I have some other conflicts and commitments.
Got it. Okay. So you want ten calendar days?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let me just look. That date is going to be what day here? Let me just pull up my calendar. All right. So we are at the twenty-second. The ten-day mark is going to be on May third. Is that okay? Is it, did I get that right, everybody?
Sorry. May third, Monday. Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. And then also Attorney Monahan, are you going to be able to get your information in by May third?
Yes.
Okay. And then what I'll do is I'm going to give both the applicant and the intervener a week to send a reply to the information that's submitted to OHHS. So if there's anything that you wanted to note with regard to the submissions, you're going to have opportunity to do that. So that is going to be due on, uh, a week from May third. So that's going to be due on May ten. Is that enough time for everybody? I don't want to get anybody in a jam.
I'm with intervener.
And yes, for the applicant.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and correct myself to that we are going to leave the record open to May ten for, uh, any public comments that people want to send in. One other thing, um, since we're looking a lot at data, I wanted to take, um, notice of the All-Payer Claims Database and the OHHS Inpatient Discharge Database. We do run numbers from that sometimes when we have, um, uh, applications for PCI. If there's anything new that we're going to introduce, we're also going to give, um, uh, council the opportunity to make comment on anything that we propose to add to the record. So we just want to make sure that we double check the numbers and, um, look at it from what we have in-house. Um, sometimes it may not be the most up-to-date data, but we're, um, utilizing more of our data, um, as much as we can to, to take a look at um, what we're receiving from, um, applicants. So we're going to do, do that as well. So I'll just go ahead and take notice of that. Is there any objection from counsel on that? If I get, as long as I give you guys an opportunity to, to reply or respond to any data that we want to submit, um, we want to include into the record that we generate in-house at OHHS.
On behalf of the applicant, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, Attorney Tucci.
No objection from the intervener.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I'm going to, um, go ahead and, um, ask counsel for, um, the applicant and for the intervenor to make closing statements. Um, so because this is the applicant's, because it's their application, I'm going to ask the intervenor to go first and then the applicant to have the last uh, set of comments. So Attorney Monahan, if you wouldn't mind going first?
Certainly, and I appreciate that. And you've heard a lot today. We all have heard a lot today and read a lot. We should make some brief summary comments. On behalf of Stanford Health, Inc., I, I think what I would like to just impress upon the hearing officer and the, and the OHS staff is that we believe that this, we are in a period of time where we have to take stock in the fact that we are a CON state. We have CON statutes and we have them until we do not. I know that there is talk and there has been testimony about different variations of, and views of quality and cost and so on, but the principles and guidelines of the, of the CON statute are what we are bound by and indeed what we submit, as you know, oh, well, uh, OHS is considering and, and, and considering well and thoroughly as it hears all this information. The, we believe that the desire of, especially as we become and candidly a system state, a state that has more systems than, than smaller community hospitals. We think it's important, um, as was made clear by our CEO, that the desire of a system and even the desire of a patient to be close to home or to be close to their favorite hospital does not necessarily and does not in fact constitute one of the core principles, which is unmet need. And we think that we have to, in this kind of setting, go to the core principles of our CON law, one of which is unmet, unmet need. I do not think there was one person on either side of the table here today that acknowledged that there is a, a lack of access of elective PCI. Um, there are a number of hospitals that are able to provide that with full surgical backup. And so we believe that one of the cornerstones of CON is not met in this case. Um, the, the second thing is in the event that this application was granted, it, it, it may be sort of a, a natural follow to what I just said, but it, it would be a duplication of a service that is already being provided and satisfying a need. And as you've heard from witnesses, there is plenty of additional capacity or access. I believe whether one calls it access capacity, um, we may be dealing with semantics. The point is, can the service be provided to the people who need it with the highest quality care possible? And there has been no evidence submitted by the applicant that that is not the case. We are a system in the state for elective PCI where we can provide high-quality service to all who need it. The third thing that I'd like to raise is this clearly, and, and, and again, as a core principle, we're always dealing with providing the best care possible for all of our residents in the state of Connecticut. And quality is an important issue. Now, for that reason, um, and I think, you know, focusing back on what Dr. Bala has emphasized, while we have a number, and it's the, and it's becoming the nature of medicine, I heard actually testimony from the Norwalk people about how, how the, 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 the study of medicine is accelerating and there's new things happening all the time, which really highlights the point that Dr. Bala was making, is that we need to have experts come to consensus to reach agreement on a best practice. And again, not being a clinician, but when I was given examples as I prepared for this about how best practices formed things like when women should get mammograms every year, when people should start getting colonoscopies, what the best practices are. Should, the, the fact that we start with best practices, yes, they may change over time. But in this case, the best practice unanimously recognized, even though there's poking at it and examination and debate, the best practice in place is that 200 minimum PCI volume for the facility. And we believe to go below that is to lean toward less optimal care and worse outcomes based on those three expert consensus studies. The, the other thing I would like to point out is that I do believe, and I appreciate there will be late files in this. I do believe that there is a distinction between empirical scientific study that projects numbers that are real, especially numbers that are real in connection with a declining market, whether we look locally, statewide or nationally in the elective PCI world. And what I believe has happened in this application, and this is again, no disrespect to anyone involved, but there is no evidence that the mechanism to come up with these projections that were well below the 200 benchmark. And now suddenly, many more above. It has no empirical basis that we have seen. And we do not think an off-the-cuff estimation is the way to somehow get past this critical quality requirement. So in, in closing, what I, what I'd like to just suggest and, and say is, number one, we appreciate the fact that we have had the opportunity to present a very full hearing. We appreciate the fact that the Office of Health Strategy has heard testimony and I'll dare say her counsel who have, I think, both vigorously tried to represent their, their clients and, and and, and allow as much information in as, as, as possible. I would, a, as a last point, state that in being consistent with the Office of Health Strategy charge under the CON laws, we feel strongly that that statewide healthcare facility plan has meaning. It has precedent. It has been used and relied on. And while others, I believe Dr. Murphy did in fact point out that there may be task forces looking at things, and of course, that's natural. There is a study in a facilities plan that took a long time to put in place. It is still consistent with the consensus expert report that is in place, and we believe it should be honored. So for those reasons, I thank you for the opportunity to present to you this closing remark. And I appreciate the fact that you allowed our witnesses to testify as fully as you did.
Thanks, Attorney Monahan. Uh, Attorney Tucci?
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. It's been a long day. Um, and I want to say this, on behalf of Norwalk Hospital as the applicant, um, we appreciate the extraordinary patience of you as the hearing officer and OHS staff in allowing a full airing of this hearing. Um, the second thing I want to say is we're going to keep our remarks in closing very brief, uh, especially in light of the fact that we've been here so long. And I think the last thing that you need to hear is more lawyer argument from me about statutes and magic numbers and all this other stuff. So I'm going to cede a very brief amount of time to Dr. Worschowski, who's going to actually tell you about what's really going on on the ground in medical science, which I think is really the most important thing for OHS to consider in this application.
Um, I want to thank everybody for their time. Uh, certainly appreciate it. Uh, I want to first say, um, just if it helps, based on 2020, it looks like a little less than a tenth of patients that had PCI at Stanford Hospital came from Norwalk, from the city of Norwalk. So um, hopefully that helps. I really want to bring this back to the patients. We've talked a lot about data. We've talked a lot about laws and, and CONs and all that, but I, I do want to bring this back to the patients. Um, a, and we know that providing PCI without cardiac surgical backup, which is really a, an antiquated term even at this point, is safe. We know it's safe and we can quibble about 190 versus 210. Um, but I do feel that we have the expertise in our system to provide this care, particularly with a partnership with the Cleveland Clinic, safely, uh, and efficiently and with high value for patients. I think that when we, you know, I would not trivialize, trivialize the transfer of patients at what it means to patients and their families. You know, we say, okay, it's only, you know, 10 miles away to this institution or, or 20 miles away to that institution. Many of our patients' families take public transportation. To think that they can just all of a sudden hop over to another hospital to be with their family member is, I think, you know, not really seeing what's happening on, on the ground and, and in terms of those who are, who are caring for patients on the front line and what, what they're seeing. And I think when we, uh, think about what we've been through over the past year with COVID and looking into, uh, going into potentially another season with variants and, and uh, vaccines not being as effective maybe as we would like them to be, um, the thought of transferring patients between institutions i- is, is frightening. Um, at worst, I mean, at best, you know, transferring a patient is inconvenient. At worst, it can lead to medical errors and certainly redundancy of care and increased costs. I, I think that our STEMI patients, uh, whether it's 65 or 80 per year, whatever that may be, you know, these are patients who have come to Norwalk Hospital, not because of any marketing campaign or anything like that. They've come to, to Norwalk Hospital because they have really presented with life-threatening a, a life-threatening episode, um, a heart attack that needs emergent care. And we provide that care for them. Um, the thought that we could not care for patients who, um, come in with unstable coronary syndromes that do in fact need urgent care, it just doesn't make really any sense, um, at all at this point. And I think that those patients that are coming here with a STEMI who know that this is the closest place for them, who know that this is their community hospital, um, really speak volumes and, and really, um, say to us that there is a need in our community and whether it's a four to one, six to one, 20 to one ratio, that our volumes for PCI are going to be more than adequate to meet the standard. So again, I, I, I want to bring this focus back to the patients, back to our community. Um, because I really do think that those patients deserve to have this program at their hospital, at, at Norwalk Hospital. So thank you.
Thank you. So, um, just, uh, in closing, I just want to, uh, thank both the applicant and the intervenor for presenting all of the testimony today and, um, also want to thank OHS staff. We're going to leave the record open for the receipt of the late files and the replies and also any, um, public comment. I hope that everybody has a great day and, um, we will be in touch shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Thanks, Mr. Dixon. Appreciate your help today.
My pleasure. Have a good one.
All right.